Contact him and ask him why it is done this way. To compare what is done in law enforcement today to how it was done 20 and 30 years ago is a dead end. That does not promote positive growth and change. The amount of administrative tasks in law enforcement is ever increasing. Meetings, technology, phone calls, state and federal reporting requirements, trading records, policy updates, and responding to citizens all take time and effort during the course of a day. Do not believe everything you are being told. Check and verify both sides of what is presented and check with multiple sources. If the wrong decision is made, without looking at the issues involved, the results can be costly. It seems this action is being pursued despite the citizens what is telling you they want. Our elected and appointed officials are in these roles to serve the public, not impose their will upon them. This whole process has an undercurrent of tyranny and deception. Two years ago, the sheriff's race, during the sheriff's race, we were led to believe that the sheriff's department was corrupt and Sheriff Wiger could not be trusted. Isn't it odd how that now suddenly we are being presented with having this supposedly dishonest organization provide our law enforcement services to the city? I know the sheriff's department will do their best to provide quality people to staff this city. But remember, it is tough to find good cops these days and seasoned cops are leaving the ranks. The sheriff's department has already down several people and will have the additional burden of adding more to staff New Holstein. It is represented as a seamless transition, as if one day we will be wearing blue and the next it will be brown. Things rarely go that smoothly. The NHPD officers who leave here and be hired elsewhere will potentially lose vacation time, sick time, and seniority. They will experience the extra cost of transitioning uniforms and equipment. Unforeseen issues will arise as this gets closer to implementation. In the long run, what looks good on paper does not result in the expected savings. There are expenses in the projected budget that currently do not actually exist and simply removing them from the projected budget numbers greatly reduces the reported savings used to sell this plan. Law enforcement is like a brotherhood. There may be differences and opposing opinions between agencies, but when help is requested, we respond with vigor and rise to the occasion for our common goal of keeping each other and our citizens safe. We are not perfect, but we strive to bring courage, candor, bravery, and integrity to our profession. Wherever the officers of New Holstein PD may go from here, I am confident our officers will be a positive reflection of where we came from. To fail to uphold our oath, to fail the brotherhood, to fail the citizens brings dishonor to our profession. To turn your back on the brotherhood means that you forfeit the honor of being a part of the thin blue line.
My name is Steve Abrams and I've been living in town here for about 20 years, raised my kids here, still raising half of them here. I guess I just wanted to bring a few thoughts. There's obviously been talk about the numbers being finalized and I understand that there's some work to be done there. I'm curious as to who's going to replace the work the chief does as far as getting ahold of somebody. You know how it is, officers are all working and when you call and you can go down to the PD and you get ahold of the chief and you can talk to him and you can share whatever it is that you need to ask him about. So there's some of these things that are going on that are a major issue. But I guess the forefront or the major question and concern I have about this entire topic is how the decision has been proceeding. And this has been mentioned already several times tonight. First of all, because it's being done so quickly, this all started at least as far as I knew on September 1st, obviously there was probably some work done before then. But in regards to the city, the population and the police department and that, and we're working with numbers that have changed significantly from one meeting to the next and still aren't completely finalized. Part of that is an issue with how this has proceeded so quickly. Secondly, the manner and speed in which this is being handled has left much of the city population unaware that this is even happening, as also was mentioned previously. That's not even counting about the details that are going into this decision that has to be made. Unfortunately, from the outside, not being a member of the council looking in, this reflects poorly on our council and our mayor. It appears, or the questions could at least be asked, is it being done this way on purpose so that it can get passed quickly and under the radar? That's the obvious question that's going to be asked and that you need to be aware of what it appears to the people of our town. Thirdly, the manner in which this has been handled has really completely blindsided and ambushed the men that have been serving and protecting our community for years or decades, as we've just heard. On September 12th, we all know the story of the man who stuck up, snuck up on those officers in Los Angeles and shot them both several times. Unfortunately, this is the state of affairs in our country right now. Police officers are targets. Violence against them has been encouraged by some. And they know if they defend their lives and somebody pulls a gun on them and they shoot them, they may very well lose their job if they don't lose their life. The way this has played out, it feels like our entire police force has been ambushed, not by a criminal, but by our city council and our mayor. And a lot of that has to do with how it's being handled. I talked to Chief Reedy yesterday and I mentioned, or I found out what I'd also heard, that nobody from our council has talked to him. He's pleasant, he was easy to talk to. I didn't, so I'm assuming it's not intimidation. I'm just surprised that we are not going through all our bases, checking for all information possible, all options, as one of the gentlemen said, "There's many ways that we could crack this nut," I think would be a quote. So this is, these are some of the issues that are causing really a lot of concern and questions to what's going on. Obviously, it's also leaked that there's some negotiations about severance pay and all that and not a new contract. My wife saw it on Facebook. You can be offended that somebody leaked information they shouldn't have, but at this point, the information is out there. And it, whatever went into it that we're not aware of, on the surface, it doesn't look good. Why we're negotiating severance pay and not a contract or not at least both so that all options are covered. I agree with many who have stated already that the council needs to step back, take the time to get comprehensive numbers that are detailed, accurate, take the steps to ensure to the best of their ability that the city understands the issues at hand. Find out if the extra expense of keeping our current police department is worth it to the public. Maybe they would rather something else be cut. And then handle this in a manner that shows respect, courtesy, and kindness to the officers that have served our city. Right now, this process looks like it's lacking in accuracy and details and it's giving the appearance, whether intended or not, that it's a little bit on the shady side rather than being transparent and taking the time to make sure everybody is informed the way they ought to be. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
John Rather, chiropractor in Holstein, grew up here, have either lived here or worked here my whole life except for going to school. So, questions? I've heard a lot of statements. Sheriff, when you were going through the data report, 1.6 million savings, you're taking 500,000 out, then it's possibly, there's an also some 600,000, I mean, which one is? So, I mean, is it 1.6? Is the 500,000, are we going to add it in or throw it out?
I provided both of those so that people could see if they were to say, well, for example, something that's to occur is not necessarily the savings.
Right.
So the half a million dollars I gave as an example, you remove that, you're still going to, you're still going to realize savings.
Do you have two squads versus four squads versus?
Yep. The numbers are, the numbers are separated from, and I think I've had conversations with several residents about that, different than what some of the comments are coming from the public. The numbers are the numbers. That, those, their savings are going to be realized, but that doesn't, I really substitute for everything else that's been said so far, but my numbers are accurate.
I believe your numbers, I just question you.
Sure.
And also, the only alternate that I've had any contact with is Brad Hess and Rich Nelson. I haven't heard from anybody else, not that it matters. My doors are open every day up there except for Sundays. This, on the surface, is sketchy at best. The actions, the motions, the, I've got the votes in my pocket, sketchy. Sometimes it's not a message, it's a messenger. And that's what I hear in my office on a daily basis. This has been discussed ad nauseam besides this and the China virus. To rush into something like this, not really knowing what the savings are, is there going to be a savings? Yes. Is irresponsible at best. My most prevalent question is that when we discuss it at my office or out in public, I try to prioritize these, is our great officers and friends of mine, Rob, Chuck, Kurt, where's the tech, oh, I don't know, but I love you enough to make. They can apply for the jobs. None of them are guaranteed position, are they? Are they? Are any of these guys definitely a good idea? Can you say that right now? Are they going to control my seats? And if this was proposed three or four or five years ago, what would your, how would you feel about it? Would you be voting for this?
I'd wear a different hat.
All right, you asked a new question. If this was kicked around years ago, would you be in favor of it?
It's been kicked around since the 80s.
But would you be in favor of it? Answer my question, yes or no?
I guess I'd have to see what the facts are.
Okay. That answered my question. You know, this needs to, first of all, the gentleman from Combined Locks, two years to make this decision. Why was this forced down our throats in three months or four months? I understand the contract is up. Give them your contract, let's figure it out. You know, Brian, Chief Reedy, I know you somewhat, a man of honor. This is just ridiculous. It's pathetic to hear that New Holstein's been dwindling, we lost the Comsey, it's been dwindling, we're not going to have anybody come here to save us. If I'm the mayor and if I'm in the council, I'm looking for new businesses, I'm looking for a bank. For God's sakes, we don't have a commercial bank in town. I understand that, you guys have other options. You know what? There are businesses out there, there are businesses out there that are looking, okay. Yes, we can sit here and we can make excuses, we can blame the virus. The virus. We can blame this, we can blame that. What have you guys done before even Mayor Hebel to bring new businesses to town? I haven't seen a squad. Who has visited my office? You know, just on a side note, I belong to the, the, 62 years of a chiropractor in Holstein. Have I seen anybody show up to say hi? No, we don't need to pat them back. But as the longest family-owned business in town now, I think I have a say. And, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to grow. We don't need to say that we're dwindling. What kind of attitude is that? That's defeatism. If I was going to say, oh, I've been doing this for 25 years now, I'm just going to kind of coast it and I'll be out of business tomorrow. That's why New Holstein's in the shape it's in. We have a great police department, we have a great fire department, we have great first response. We have lots of great businesses, but we need to grow. You don't, you never stay stagnant. You either go down or you go up. That's just life. And, not that we don't want you here, but we don't want you controlling our police department. Very familiar with some of your deputies, Eric Bowman, Sarah Fraley, great people, great backup for us. I want these guys back here. We like them, we trust them, and it's nothing against you guys. It's just that we want our men that we know on a daily basis that are friends of ours. I'm sorry. To be, our, and give us a chance to work. Let's fix what's wrong, if there's something wrong, but let's just don't dismantle this matter in three months because of different situations. My last question, and this is the most prevalent question I get asked in my office, is, is this really about saving money or is this a personal vendetta?
No.
Jeff, do you want us to answer the question about stepping or if you guys don't mind? We can't guarantee that we're going to be hiring the individual officers. That would be disingenuine to sit here and tell you that. Of course, as county employees, we would need the opportunity to interview and go through the process and it's the sheriff's prerogative to determine who works for the sheriff, okay? I did want to point out though in transparency that what we do have arrangements with the village of Harrison is the village, and that would be the same if the city chooses to go this direction. We understand the importance of a community to identify that they're local police officers. So every year, we would be checking, and it's in the contract specifically, we would be notifying the city, these are the officers for New Holstein now. The sheriff would have an identified group. If something were to occur, the city was disassociated with a specific officer, they would have a remedy within the contract to talk to us about that or talk to the sheriff about that. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, there is city control in terms of police policing your communities to the extent that is within the contract.
And I just want to add a couple things real quick and so we can continue, but I'm not on anybody's side. I was asked to come in and provide a product and that's what I've done. I respect everything that's been said here and I know it's going to continue and I respect everybody's feelings. The city came to us, asked us for a product and that's what we gave. Whether you want that product or not, that's up to you and the city council. And I appreciate what's been said here. And I just want to put back out there like I did last time, I have a great working relationship with the majority of your officers. I've known Rob longer than I've known anybody probably in this room, Brian Second of Law. You have a good department, there's no question about that. To me, that's not what this is about. I was asked to come in and give you a product, that's what we're about. When a municipality comes in and asks the county for something, that's what we provide to. Same as we do for the health department, same of those things. It's a matter of whether or not you want to go with that product or not. So, I just want to put that out there, appreciate the comments, but this isn't something that we're coming down and trying to ram down in the throat, understandable, right? Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same playing field. We're here with a product, if you want it, great, if you don't, we're accepting of that as well. So, we've worked well with Brian and the rest of the organization. Whether this happens or not, we will continue to work well with this organization, the police department. Somebody pointed out watching from their bedroom, exactly, that's exactly what we do. And that will continue whether this goes through or not. So, I want you to know that, okay? That's all I have unless there's any specific questions. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Teresco. Can anybody hear me back there? Oh, good. I do have some questions about some of the things that have been going on. One of them is we put in a lot of communication equipment over here from, I think it's called WISCOM, if I'm correct. Wisconsin Communications Network. Basically, it's to talk to all the other departments in the entire state. Also, Department of Communications also, correction, sorry. Since we've put in all this equipment in there and if this department is disbanded, what heck happens to that equipment?
Sheriff?
Nothing. Most of the equipment, such as the tower and stuff, is our equipment on that. This, the tower, for example, and all that equipment would still be used in radio transmissions. That doesn't go anywhere.
But this we use also as a backup dispatch center also?
It currently is, that's being changed for liability reasons. We're going to be, going to Odegeni for a backup because we don't have 24-hour coverage down there. It's nothing to do with the PD or anything like that, but the backup dispatch center will go to Odegeni eventually. What happened is, I'll just give you a real quick scenario, happened a couple of years ago, there was a, I'm going to try this thing, there was a major power outage in the county when it had a real cold step a couple of years ago, if you remember. And some things didn't work right, some generators didn't start. There was a problem with switchgear coming down to here. There were some mistakes made on some people's parts about activating some switches, things like that. Long story short, there was a time period where those calls did not get answered. From my standpoint, that's not acceptable. Not acceptable for you, it's not acceptable for me. That's why we're moving that backup dispatch center. Won't affect anything down here, you still have the ability to dispatch through here, but that backup is going to go to Odegeni, so God forbid that happens again. They have train dispatchers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If you're having a heart attack, your finger's cut off, that phone's going to be answered. That day, the phone may not have gotten answered. That's not acceptable, shouldn't be to you, and it certainly isn't to me as your sheriff. So that's why it's being moved, so I'm going to give you that backup. Thank you.
Second part on that is if the city dispatch is disbanded, who's taking over dispatch for the utilities and for the city department?
Well, the utilities, they're looking at a call service already that will be going into effect January 1st.
Okay, what about public service?
They have their own radios, they talk to each other.
They got their own radios, that's great. But how, who's going to be answering it?
The DPW workers.
So you're going to have somebody actually sitting there to answer you on the phone all the time?
They call City Hall and the City Hall staff answers those calls upstairs. They don't go to the police department anymore. They haven't done that for 15, 20 years.
Judging by the voices, they do.
10, 15 years? I don't know, Scott.
Well, that's great, fine. But there is also one other question that did come up, is the number of vehicles that we have with this department. I counted four. I've heard numbers of even six.
No, it's never been said by us at the council. There's three and one city car.
Well, from what I have seen so far, it's been one Tahoe, two Explorers, and two Dodge Chargers, one of them unmarked. And it's still considering, it still has official plates on it.
What's your point? There's a Tahoe, a Charger, a city car Charger.
Two Chargers, actually.
But those are used for city employees as well, to go to training, things like that. And then an Explorer. So there's four, but three designated for the police department. What is your point?
Three, hold on, hold on. Three of them that were designated? Four of them have got markings for New Holstein Police. Is that correct?
No.
Yes. That is very correct, because I've actually seen them. Now, are we going to be taking all those and converting them over to county? Are we going to be repainting them, restating them? What? And what is going to happen to all the equipment in there?
Go to the sheriff's department.
Okay. And one other question that also came up was, currently, the Holstein Police have been patrolling for individual gangs and that for this high school. Who's going to be doing that?
Sheriff, do you guys supply officers for Chilton?
Sure, when the request is made, we do that.
The idea is to try to get a face out in front of them that says, hey, we're here, we want to help. At this point, you're not giving them a face anymore. And that's not right. I mean, I remember listening to former chief and that who said, you got to get back out to the public again. You got to meet the people, you can't sit in a squad car all day. If you do that, it's about like sitting inside of a coffin. Nothing comes in and nothing goes out. That's not right either. Thing is, that individual is also sitting here tonight also, I do thank him for his participation in this as well. But thing is, right now, I agree. Police departments, all of the United States are under fire right now. This is just actually a very bad time. And I hope that you kind of realize the situation that you've stuck us all into now.
Thank you.
Okay. And by the way, Captain, finally glad to meet you in person. Well, actually, it's about the second time, first time was on a quick trip and you were in the middle of investigation at the time.
I'm speaking, I don't speak so loud. My name is Diane Reese and I'm here also to just say a few words. I've got a short thing to say at the beginning and then I need to read another email someone had sent me that they wish to have read. The purpose of, the proposal of outsourcing the New Holstein Police Department is of course a huge step, as all you have heard already. There needs to be more time and you also heard to reevaluate the proposal set up by the city team of Busman and Hebel with the county team of Romanesco and Wiger. I guess we want more input on this. Just before I came tonight, I received another email saying, what is the rush? And we've heard that time and time again tonight. While I was canvassing Ward 3, along with Mary on Ward 3, I had spoken to 97 people and of course, a lot of doors were, they didn't answer or they were still at work. Out of that, 83% wanted some input for voting. And, and then there was a 17% that wanted more information, were undecided, pretty much what we're trying to get here and hopefully down the line. See, and on the canvas, on the canvas, they also had asked if why was there not an in-house cutback proposal when we were going to go so strong to do this big step? They said, we should start from within to see if there's something that we cannot accommodate, you know, our city, instead of going forward. you know, our city, instead of going forward.'" And I just don't wanna repeat, but I just want you to know, I heard the same things. And then, uh, they said, "You should at least try it. If not for a year, two years." You know, I would go for two years, but, you know, a, a year, at least a year, I would say, would be good, so you can see if we can actually do it. And if we can't, well, then we'll move forward. But we don't have anything to lose at now. But yes, there's money involved, but, you know, money comes and goes. Everyone knows that once we totally switch, it is very unlikely the Holstein will ever afford to reverse that decision. Um, so what I guess I'm asking to consider is that, uh, we run the Police Department with cutbacks for at least one year with some proposals that will come from the Police Department office. Create an an-hoc committee of citizens, entire Police Department, and councils to help evaluate the situations. And/or give the challenge entirely to the Police Department to meet or exceed Calumet County's offer. Um, you must all remember that councilmen, you were voted in by the citizens. You are paid by the citizens, and you need to represent the citizens, and that's what you say you were, you were going to do, you know, by voting as they would prefer. Citizens realize costs may be going up, and I feel they are willing to take on that burden for the safety of their city. That was all I got. And, uh, I know we talked, uh, we had heard of beginning in a couple of meetings, um, forget about your feeling good and your emotions. This, this is all money. Well, I have a really, um, nice email from, um, Police Chief Timothy Miller. He's the Police Chief of a village of, uh, Stratford, and he's got a few good-eyed things to say, and I thought it would be nice to follow up with this. It says, "As with any community, having that hometown police presence is very important. Stratford values us because we are a part of the community, community. Our village board finds a way to fund us. Using the Sheriff's Department may look cheaper on paper, but is it effective, small-town policing? Each community, of course, is different." Then he followed up with another one. He says, "If the population and calls for service are going down, you would think that they would look at reducing the Police Department, not replacing it. That also might not be a popular thing, but that's where you, as residents, step in and voice your opinion." Um, and he just actually went online and read a lot of the different comments and the, um, stuff what he caught and he could figure out online. And then he ended up with saying, "Remember, they are all elected officials. Citizens need to step up and let them know what you want. It's your money and should be spent how you want. I disagree with the mayor's says you won't notice any change in service. If all, if all he is worried about is response time and resources, then he probably never bought into the community policing. Seeing your officers at school sporting events and community events contributes to the community pride. Seeing your police supporting the community by being a part of it and not just policing and responding quickly means a lot more sometimes. Again, it is up to you, as residents, to express what you want done with your tax money. The mayor can propose whatever he wants. The council can approve or shut it down. They all can be replaced at the next election. They will be gone, and the city is left to deal with the rest. Thank you."
Um, I thought about, uh, didn't let folks know who I am. My name is Dave Dacca. I'm a pastor here in town. Um, I was elderly quite a few weeks ago. I've only been in this community five years. Um, but I tell you what, I have thoroughly fell in love with this community. And I, and I think those who know me know that I have jumped in headfirst, gotten involved as much as I could. And one of those things I get to do is be the chaplain of the Police Department and the Fire Department. Men and women who will go through hell to protect you. Without going pay. I'm sure Mayor Hebel, you know that, and Sheriff Weeger, these guys that you work with or you've been a part of, don't get paid enough. You guys don't get paid enough for what you do, 'cause you're doing an amazing job, as well as the Police Department. When I came in here in town to the Holstein, I came to Chief Reedy, and I said, "I wanna be involved. How can I help?" And eventually, he said, "I want to, would you come on and replace their chaplain?" Absolutely. I got to sit twice a month, I tried to, um, in a, in the car with the officers and watch what they do. Amazing work. That, if I didn't do this, I wouldn't know what they did. Not at all. The stuff that they do at midnight, at 2:00 AM, at 3:00 AM, at 8 o'clock at night, when you're in bed, amazing work. And then I also remember, um, being a part of the chamber here in the Holstein. They had an active shooter training where one of the officers, and I'll front them out because I thought it was pretty cool, was Officer Stefani, had shared at that meeting that in the schools, if a school had an active shooter and the doors were locked, his response was, "My car becomes a weapon. I'm going through the school and attacking those kids." Well, as a father, to a daughter who was a senior this year, and the son who graduated last year, I came home and told them, and they're, they're like, "Man, Dad." That, that really gives us a sense of safety. And my daughter has, and my kids have both gotten to know both of the ladies and officers that have happened over the years, um, on good terms, which is a good thing. But they have always loved them. And so, my hope tonight, as I know, the rumors are that this is a done deal, that this is gonna happen, that there's not gonna be a vote, and I hope that's not true. But my last time here with you guys is to remind you that these guys behind me have families. Families who, who not only do they have to put up, the officers have to put up their life. These families lay, lay down their husband's life, their wife's life, their mom's life, their dad's life, for you and for me. And so, a decision like this can't be taken lightly. I know, Mayor Hebel, we've, we, um, you know, I've heard in discussion that over the years, this is, and we just said tonight, that it's come up a lot. And I know probably how you felt at that time as an officer, 'cause then I know how I would've felt. And I know you've probably told these aldermen in this room that, guys, if this happens, we have to recognize these guys who will or will not lose their jobs. We have to remind them how hard they worked for us, how hard they went through the door to come protect us. That's what I love about this community. Not only this school district, that, which has done an amazing job with my son and daughter in teaching them, but the Police Department and the Fire Department for the protection they can provide. Don't forget these guys. On a positive note, this has allowed me to realize that I need to be more involved. And I hope to be, in some way, come into more meetings, because again, it was said, show up, and I will show up. And I hope my aldermen, because I don't know you, I've never, I've met maybe one or two of you in the gym at one point, um, at the, at the school. And I think one of you I might live near close to, but I hope you already have heard my, my voice over the last couple of weeks, that you know my opinion. But don't forget these guys. Don't forget these men and women who are willing to lay their life down for you. If this is a vote that's already gonna happen, I hope you got plans to recognize them. I, I truly believe that. Because if you don't, that, that'll show absolute disrespect. Because they don't deserve it. For a few dollars, I get it's 1.6, if we do the math. If you can't afford it, I'll pay the extra 200 a month out of my pocket.
My name is Mark Roll. I'm a retired police officer from the city in the Holstein. I look around this room, and I look at some of the guys. I look at our current Police Department, which I don't know, you bear, I've met, I know Chief Reedy, Chuck May, this is Eric. One thing that really touches me that other people have talked about is our community, and it's about relationships, and that's exactly what it's about. Wayne Swart, Gene Hert, Wally Tuzinski, some of these guys have already passed on. They lived in this community and have died in this community. We are part of this community. I was proud to serve this city for 16 years on a night shift. And like he said, what behind the scenes, what these guys do, and you're a 24-hour cop in this city. These other guys go home, they're not gonna live here. We were 24-hour cops. What if he has plain clothes on, Chuck? Or he does uniform? Chuck was a 24-hour cop in the city in Holstein. Always, and all these people are too. That's the advantage of having them in our city. And I'm sorry, Jeff, it's about you and money, because obviously, you didn't buy it to the community department. They took the money, and, "Oh, I love the citizens." What the citizens gave you salary, wayward, you just don't forget them.
I'm, uh, Mike Jacobson. You guys have brought up and said, "We're not defunding the police." I agree with you completely. You're disbanding the Holstein Police Department. It's not just you on this. You're disbanding. If this goes through, you can't turn around and look and say, "Oh, there's a Holstein police officer." Just know that will be a sheriff deputy. It will not be the Holstein department. If you notice, the people that are in here and heard what people have said tonight, there is a high percentage that says, "You're rushing too fast on this. This is something that the citizens should vote on." The citizens, I was out before, and 0.4% said the city council should vote on it. 99.6% said it should go to a referendum. Now, it wasn't the whole community, and I wasn't the only one out there, but if you see who's around here and listen to what's being said, your bosses wish to vote on this. And that is the direction that the city council should go. It should go to a referendum. You should extend a year contract for the police, go to a referendum, give all the details. Then if it gets passed, then it's the people that said, said it, not it people.
I don't know if anybody knows who I am. I own a business at the other end of town. I'm not a city resident. I have no voting rights, but I do have opinions. I do give my opinions a lot. I'm shocked you guys are so surprised this is how it works. Been through it, been done, down this road before. I, the, when I look at a police chief or look at the, the unit of police, I look at them as community leaders, community people you look to. I'm sure we'll get quality people from the county, no problem. But every meeting is not the chief there, just about.
Ask me.
Right? Ask me. Okay? So, isn't that important for our city, to have a presence like that, that somebody's not gonna move on? And it's, my, my proposal, when you asked me about it, I said, "To do what?" "To split it up." To see if there's a way to split it, that the night shift can be given to the county, or you could do different things. Not to dismantle it completely, quickly, without more input by everybody. All you're getting tonight, you know, you come to me, and, you know, I fought the tax thing. I don't wanna be taxed, 'cause I wanna be competitive in what I do. I wanna stay viable in what I do. So, at the end of the day, you know, are we gonna save money? Yes, but there's a lot of other ways to save money. You give me your budget, I'll slash it. I know how. I'd like to say that, no doubt about it, I do have questions on the administration part of it, because although they know exactly what they're gonna do, if there's not gonna be overruns of cost, and then propose to whoever's gonna pay the difference if it doesn't make it. In a business, I would have to. If I made a huge decision to do something, and it doesn't meet my budgetary matters, who's gonna pay it? We will. Not you guys, and I'll pay a good share of it. But at the end of the day, I want something done, because we need to, I know the problems we're having as a city. And it's not that bad, but it's bad enough that we have to do something. But I appreciate to have police that we have here, here. And I do think that we could hybridize it, bring in some of it and keep some of it, because I don't think there's anything wrong with something like that. Are you guys making money on this?
No.
Completely not? You, you for sure won't. There would be, you, you did figure that in, that up. So, you're just going to sell the kindness that you're gonna help out a city that...
We're, we're the county government.
Yep, I realize that. I'm just, I'm just curious, because how do you know exactly what it's gonna cost?
I did never say I knew exactly what it was gonna cost.
So, it could vary, it could be the way up and down.
The, the city will pay the actual cost.
And that would be, you'd have to track of every officer I put in, and, and the county, when they would respond on a normal basis, wouldn't be charged, and you're gonna have officers here, and you have it all hanging out here. All right. So, and then, uh, what else? I don't write speeches. I just come up here and blabber on. When you're gonna save the money, what are we gonna spend it on? Are you gonna lower my taxes, or are you gonna spend it on what? Anything? The roads? Have you talked about the savings? 'Cause it's a substantial amount of money. How much do you need to keep the budget balanced? Is this not to balance the budget, or is this just to do it?
We don't know what our shared revenues from the state will be yet this year.
Sure, but, yeah, it's gonna be difficult, you know?
Our prediction is the shared revenues will be going down.
Because they closed out businesses, yeah?
2023.
Sure.
So, we'll have to, we have to balance the budget. We're not the federal government. We have to come up with, uh...
But you don't know, so we're jumping into this without knowing, in a short period of time? Is that what you're telling me?
No, we're going by what the numbers that were presented to us from the county as far as our...
I, I realize that, but as a count, as, why are you guys doing it now? Like, do you need to do it right now? Is it a need for the city?
I guess the answer that, the proposal came to us, the proposal came to us as a, as a, as the alderman. We have had open meetings, and we're in the process of looking at this. We haven't made a decision, and obviously, with the... I have not.
Who's the vote? Raise your hand. Well, how do you know that? You don't know that. You don't know. Who has ever said that? Who has ever said they had to vote to the back pocket? I've never talked to any one of these individuals as to what their vote might be.
So, going back to my part, we're here to listen to you, and now, we, we have to make our next step, our next decision.
So, you aren't gonna vote on it tonight?
Oh, absolutely not.
This is an ongoing project for...
Some here to talk.
You have no objective time?
We don't have, I don't have a deadline.
There's never been discussed a deadline. That's why...
The first thing is that January 1st, and then just because the contracts are up.
I haven't seen a vote or a grant, but obviously, that needs to be thought.
And as you see what the input is from the city, you're reconsidering how this is gonna go. Yeah, but, and that's what I'm wondering. I, you guys have been under tackle. See, I'm kind of in between all this, doing, having businesses is bad news for me to come up here, because I'm, I want the savings and I want to progress like you guys wanna progress. On the other hand, I hear what they're saying, too, a lot.
And Joe and I, we had talked, two weeks ago.
And I talked to Brad, too. I'd like to talk to everybody. I have lots of opinions about a lot of things.
That's why I stopped.
I, I know, I know, right?
Say, Joe, those monies, as far as I'm concerned...
Yeah.
Are going to go for street replacement and roads.
Okay.
This city needs to address streets...
Sure.
That need to be...
I, I agree. I...
We can't financially afford to do a hell of a lot of any of that.
Give me your budget, I'll give it to you.
You will?
Yep.
You certainly will.
Yeah, give me a budget.
Every year...
Well, ask Casey, we'll give you the budget, you tell us.
Every year, we ask each department to cut ten percent. Jason Meyer is sitting out there, and he can attest to that. We ask every budget to cut ten percent. Police Department is thirty-one percent of our total operating budget for twenty-twenty. Okay? So, this, just look, we have, look at this opportunity. And I understand where everybody's coming from, and we as politicians have to listen to what the people want. And that's why we're having this public hearing.
Would you consider that half and half? Or do something, do we still have community leader and still...
Anything is...
Right, and that's... But it seemed like as a presentation, it was this or nothing right now. Well, that's what the presentation was made, there wasn't like other options. As the first, I don't remember his name, the first lieutenant there was saying, "You can't go with one thing." He said, "Have all options open." And he kept saying that, "All options are open." And that's how you have to look at this. Because something probably does need to be done, I agree with you, but it has to be done in an open fashion. I mean, not to even contact Brian, and talk to him, and really get into the numbers, and really figure out what you can do, and ask him if there's any possible way, because we're really running into a hard wall, that that's the way to approach it, instead of just saying, boom, we're gonna be done. And I'm sorry, Jeff, people think that you're after these guys, because you worked there and you have some vendetta against them, and it's, I mean, as plain as day, and it's clear as can be, and that's the way people think of it. And I'm not saying that it's for sure that way, but this is the way it looks. And it looks bad. And it looks bad for all of you for contributing. And that's the way you're making the community look at you. If you don't see it, I see it. And I'm just pointing it out, just trying to help. I'm not here to say either way, I'm just trying to point out what I'm seeing. If you guys can't see it, if you can't, guys can't address that, they're gonna be pissed at you.
There isn't anything sketched and stolen, that all of us eight members are wanting to have this.
Right, make that clear, make that clear to the people. They seem like they don't understand it.
That's why we're having the public hearing, to hear from our constituents. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. There's nothing cut...
Was there a closed meeting about severance packages? Was there a closed meeting about severance package? That's a huge room.
I have no idea.
We were, we had, we had a request from the police union to start negotiations.
You could have said, "I'm sorry, we can't do that yet, nothing's been decided." We have to get input from our citizens. We don't want, because now, last night, it goes out, and everybody is like, well, I guess they've made their decision, they're talking severance package.
Number one, negotiations are done in closed sessions. So, whoever leaked it, did what was unlawful. You know, we can't do that.
Well, it's out, we got out, that's, that is the world that we live in now. Like, you know, it doesn't make it right, a lot of things are happening now.
So, so...
That was your request for us to have them start negotiations. And that's what we did with the...
Well, could you have said no, can we talk in a couple of weeks? Did you have to do it? It doesn't feel like you wanted to hear what we had to say.
They requested, no, no, no.
Well, what is the latest blog spot?
That was my question right off the bat, why don't we wait to see what happens? But they requested they wanted negotiations, so we, we had...
It's all about perception, how's this look? I said it's all about perception, it's the way it looks. It might not be dirty, but perception makes it look bad. And I always said that's a problem with the city, the perception of the city looks bad. And until you start to change the perception, you're not gonna go very far with this.
A lot of people wanna make it better. A lot of people I talked to when I was managing would love to get together and figure out some creative ways to progress, not regress, not take something away, but move forward. And that takes collaboration. And I, there's wonderful people that I talked to, I was amazed, and I loved it. And everyone else has a dog, and I'm on a dog park, so we'll talk about that later.
This is, uh, this is a something, but Holstein has an economic development corporation, a private corporation, and citizens, I pay fifty bucks a year to belong to it. It's been in existence for fifteen years, we're always looking for new members and input. We are constantly trying, striving to bring business to New Holstein. It's not as easy as everybody thinks. I'm also the chairman of the Community Development Authority. We meet, we have a great group of people, local people, business people, people that have special skills. And we're working through the Tecumseh Project right now, it takes time. But it takes effort from other people in town, too. There's nothing worse when I hear somebody said that nobody's doing anything to try to bring business to New Holstein, because it is not true.
I'm so glad, when do you meet?
There are all kinds of people.
When do you meet?
Net, Holstein Economic Development.
Yeah, when? When do you meet?
Every, every, uh, last Wednesday of the month.
What time?
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay, can anyone come, or do you have to pay fifty bucks to belong?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so, last Wednesday of every month, at eight, at City Hall?
We've been meeting in the civic park because of COVID. I just wanna bring that up when you talk about, if you wanna be involved in bringing business to New Holstein, become an active member, don't sit back and complain about it, because complaining is not part of the solution, it's part of the problem.
Because a lot of us have work at eight o'clock in the morning that can't get to a meeting to help officers develop. What do we do, what do we do? What do we do? Can it be at a different timeline, a lot of us are old, and are available?
The only other question I've got, is make sure you know the comeback cost. If you decide to go anywhere with this, what's your comeback cost to become, if you wanna bring it back to your city? If the city starts to grow, and I didn't see anything up there for proposals on that. Something you gotta really think about.
In my canvas meetings this past weekend as well, I heard a lot of comments like, "Bring something into the business," and was told that we were offered by Sargento to locate in here, and Culver's in here. What happened with those things? That we didn't get those, instead they went to Keel or to Chilton. That miracle.
We're getting off the subject, but Sargento, Sargento was looking for a place to start up an operation. This is before I was on the council. They were looking for a place to start up an operation within six months. We did not have anything prepared and ready for the, to go at that time. There wasn't a district up in the northwest part of town. So, staying out of the game, Sargento here was nothing. Culver's, that's a decision Culver's makes. Any business that's gonna come to town, number one, they're not looking for free land anymore. First thing, they're looking for employees. They're looking for what kind of support they're gonna get from the community.
They're looking for a local police department.
How many empty buildings is the city of Holstein, is the city alone?
That the city owns?
Yeah, I mean, like the council, is the city owned the council?
Yes.
The Art Unlimited building, is there somebody in there, is that owned by the city?
It's private, though.
Is that all money that we could put back into the community? Could pay for all this? Have you rented that building?
We sold, we sold the old Art Unlimited, what was the Hippie complex, to Kevin Gershberg at that time. And that money was put back into development for the city.
Well, like the council, you've rented the council building, not even have to say it, you're filling it. Isn't that more relevant for the city?
That's what we're, that's what we're working on at this time.
You're running out of business over here?
We didn't, we couldn't do anything with it until we got control of the property.
Does the county not own the Tecumseh building at one point? And then we bought it back?
Tecumseh forgave the tax liability on it, and that's how we got it.
What's in it? Free, not buying it in there as well, from Chilton, for the holding tax?
They looked at it, they backed all of that.
Rosalie, would you like to speak?
Now, I am taking a big chance of being good at this meeting. But I understand that Governor Evers was looking for seven locations for boys' schools. There were closely some wanting to build homes. And I had the suggestion of having the city come in and take over the Tecumseh property, build the boys' school, which we used to call a reformatory. If you see what they have, they have these stands, it looks like a college campus. It doesn't have your high towers and everything. They would come in, they're already out, and build this building. And I brought this up to the council. And it wasn't this council, it was a different one. It wasn't Holstein, but not all these guys. And I had called the peer, wanting some information. They said, "Well, call Green Bay." But called Green Bay, got very little information, he said, "Call Madison." And I thought, I'm going anywhere, maybe the council could do it. So, I went to the council for a meeting, I gave them my proposal. And when the councilman said, "Well, that would take too many grants, we wouldn't wanna do that." And the other one said, "Well, at least we got the chain link pencil." That was the kind of attitude I got. Now, this is the first time I've been able to address this many people. But I had talked to other people about this proposal, you know, people that lived across Tecumseh. What it would do is bring so much, uh, your house, regarding your house, you're going, we get all these people coming in to work there, and I, my proposal was never on repeat. And of course, you still want several locations, I know London has it out. Uh, because I'm like, those are keys, like they're gonna put it. So, here's an opportunity for the city to come in and do the whole thing for Tecumseh, clean it all out, make a really good property, and bring in some jobs. And I know that people coming with one reformatory in the town, but maybe that's something that we need. So, it's the first time I've been able to tell people. And I'm so glad that I did, because I know a lot of people probably would say, well, boo, boo, boo. But it is an idea, and why can't we just progress with it? Do something about it. And approach them, and maybe get this Tecumseh completely out of the way, and raise some jobs, and just hear it.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Watson, I'm a resident in the city for fifty-two years. I, like everybody else, I think here tonight is really not in agreement with what's going on. I have to say, first of all, I served in a lot of capacities before I retired, and I also served on a city council of New Holstein. And these guys, they don't get much money for it, believe me. There's no money in that job at all. They're doing it as a public service, they're looking ways to find and run the city. So, this is probably one thing that they brought up. I don't think it's a good idea myself, I agree with everybody here. Because the main reason is, police officers patrol is one thing, writing out a traffic ticket, but getting to know the community, the good people, the bad people, that comes in every day as in twine with the public. And that's their safety it helps, and for ours as a city. They know who the bad guys are, where the problem spots are. And I, for one, I don't wanna see us lose that, so I'm in disagreement with the proposal. Thank you very much.
My name is Annika, and I am a senior technical student right now. I've only been a part of the community for six years. And I will say, I have never felt safer going to school than with the officers and the department we have. And bringing in the county, I already feel unsafe with that at school. You gotta think about you, the ones who are also citizens, who are gonna be growing this community. Are they gonna wanna bring your family back? And what you want is to grow the community, right? You gotta think about the ones who are gonna do that, and how this affects them.
Anybody else would like to speak today?
I'll say a little thing. Name's Bill Grubspock, uh, resident here for five years. Father owns a business here. Uh, you guys want to talk about, you know, money going out the doors? Joel, Josh, Scott, how much money you guys spend in taxes?
Each pump?
Yearly? Yeah, it'd be nice to see that money drop. You know, if you wanna talk about our elected officials here, how many have been on the council board for how long? Obviously, they've been doing a good job for how many years? Besides Brad, he's been recently, Lauren. You know, gotta, gotta give these guys credit, obviously, they've been doing a good job for how many ye, how many years, they stop. You know, one point six million, you know, you take out that five hundred thousand, that's still a lot of money, you know? Roads, taxes down, I mean, that's... You gotta look at the whole big picture, you know? A lot of these, you know, police officers, too. Growing up, I was in a bad state, you know, I had a lot of run-ins. Eagles, you know that, Chief Brady, I dealt with you a couple times, you know, Officer Baldwin. Things have changed, you know, you don't see the stuff that you used to growing up. I can admit that firsthand, you know? Just gotta look at the whole big picture, not just, you know, not defunding the police, it's not, you're not going away, you're still have coverage, you know, Kelly County still serves us, whether we got a police department or not. You know, so, just something to look at. Thanks.
Any other comments for or against?
Do you have a cost per thousand that you've calculated? A cost per thousand? One point seven million is a large number, but if you divide that out, I don't have it exact, but I did it a couple of different ways, I tried to figure out the cost per thousand. And it seemed like it was maybe about sixty dollars a year per person-ish. If that sounds really off, let me know, I have a calculation. Um, but six, so, sixty dollars per person per year? That, so you said one point six million, and you want our taxes to go down for sixty dollars a person per year? Are we willing to keep our police department in town? About five dollars a month here, that's like a coffee at Starbucks, I mean, I'll, I'll take that. And like you said before, Mr. Guzman, I, I do respect all of you, and I, I hope that that was conveyed tonight. If anything else, I'll say, Mayor People, thank you for bringing us together. This many people haven't showed up to talk about how we feel in a long time, and that's important. And I think we should keep the conversation going regardless of the outcome here. So, I do appreciate that. I just, I agree, we have to make some changes, and I know you wanna be bold, Mayor People, you ran on that campaign, and people voted for you. The people who voted for you don't want this decision to be made by the alderman, that's what they told me. So, I, we don't want our police to be the sacrificial lamb that brings some costs down. We wanna find other ways. And I think you've got people in this room and out in the community that couldn't be here tonight, that are willing to talk about it and give ideas. You got one tonight. So, maybe put some more fishing rods out, and get some new ideas and some new energy, just this did bring us together, and so, thank you for that.
If there's nothing you wanna add anything? Anyone on the council wanna add anything at this time? I would. I would just like to respect those people that got up on their behalf to address the police department issue. Also, in regards to our former mayor, this is her third time speaking. And what she shared with this council for three times was that we needed to listen to our constituents. And I'm all for that. I represent District Ward number one. There are four hundred and thirty-seven constituents in that ward. And as of today, I have yet to have one call telling me they are opposed to the law enforcement change. Not one...
Sorry, I'm part of the district, I was...
That's fine, you did not call me. I said, as of today, I have yet to have one call from the four hundred and thirty-seven constituents that I...
Have you ever tried contacting four people and asking them?
Pardon?
Have any of you ever attempted to go with these young people in your ward and ask them?
I know the people in my ward.
But have you not worn and asked them, like, all their community services?
Pardon?
Have you gone and asked those people themselves? Like, I get that they should call you, but...
No, but that's why we're happy, that's why... No, but that's why we're having, that's why we're addressing it right now. That's why we've had three meetings on this. I haven't made a decision one way or the other. There's a lot of different ways we might be able to address this.
The feedback that I got was that they don't have a strong opinion one way or the other yet. So they're not calling you to say yes or no because they don't know. They, a lot of them did not know what was happening. So they, and a lot of people unfortunately are ill informed about how our city government works. And I'm just sorry that I haven't been to a meeting yet. I've been back for six years and this is the first time that I've spoken up as well. If we want change, it starts with us, it starts with the city. And I wouldn't be so hard on them that they haven't called you. A lot of them aren't a hard yes or a hard no yet. They think it's rushed and they think it's going too fast and they knew that this meeting was coming tonight. And then they knew that we were gonna come and speak on their behalf. So they just might not have had the idea to think, I gotta tell them yes or no. They just, they want more time to sort this out.
Well, there's been three meetings now and I get a lot of calls in regards to different things that are going on in this, in this community. And I would think at least I would get one call in reference to what's going on. It's been publicized in the paper, every meeting that we.
Why do people don't get the paper?
Well, I don't, I understand that. No disrespect, I guess all I'm simply saying is what I've got out of this and what we were being told that we need to listen to our constituents. That's what I'm bringing up now, that's all I'm doing.
How are people supposed to know where to get the things from? If you don't get the local paper, then things have changed, you know? It's not just local paper that you can read or anything. What do you do? I mean, are you addressing that in the future or post things and all that? But what if you don't get the Holstein paper?
The New Holstein Library now has a section where we're having information about things happening in the community. So this is being broadcasted and we've been broadcasting all of the, the, um, the meetings about this. So we also have a weekly news piece that we're doing. So if you have information that you want out there, call the library and we will get it posted.
Can you also post the phone numbers for all of the old people?
Sure. It's on the, it's on the website.
Is there some other thing that will go pecking? I mean, there was a school where there were literally many dorm rooms to post them on and those are. That's what she likes, a lot of people that just aren't pecking.
Right, but then we have to have a place to put it. So where?
I don't know, they're most.
Okay, so who's?
Lots. For school members, so, yeah. This is part of it.
Brad, I'm here to comment on, you didn't give any calls. At one of the last, one of the meetings, one of the last or whatever, Mayor People had said that you had, you guys had received two calls. But when you did receive those calls, that when you explained it to the people, then they understood. But they weren't explained what is explained here tonight. And I think that message that was ever given to them on the phone when they did call you. It's like, oh, okay, bye. You know, but I don't know.
I guess what I'm seeing is.
Lack of confidence in the.
I never had a call to share that with anyone.
Well, I know you did.
I mean, I did.
I, I.
If you're speaking about another Alderman, that's fine.
What I'm seeing is that the people that did call, if they then say to someone else, well, so and so told me this call, okay, well, then I'm not gonna call. But what were they being told? We don't know, we don't have the exact call because they. They only got the information that you guys gave them. They didn't get everything that we've been getting.
1.6 million over five years, sounds really good. So if they're gonna call you, then that's what you're gonna share with them, is that the whole picture. I think that's why it's important that we have this tonight.
Exactly, I totally agree with it. I totally agree. That's why we're having it.
I'm gonna try to get some phone calls.
I'm trying. You just bring it on.
No, I didn't say it in that way, we did it.
No, I understand, but just bring it on.
Yeah, we, I'll should get more and more.
I find it interesting that a number of citizens took the time on their weekends to walk through all the doors. How many one of the Holstein members got up and walked and knocked on each person's door? I'd say probably seven, ten people in this city don't even know who their Alderman are. But yet you're gonna sit there and you're gonna say, and you speak for your constituents.
They have to get folded in, so they have to go along with it.
Was it?
They did, they did, they were ready to go.
Brad, this is my ward for my district, Alderman. Did you walk wrong?
I'm saying, what does matter?
I'm just saying, they, they walked in order, they folded in, they have to walk wrong to get signatures. But they're still walking wrong.
I appreciate, appreciate everybody coming tonight and appreciate your comments and a lot of this discussion of not knowing what's going on, I would love to see more people. I love what I'm seeing tonight, people getting involved. I've wanted that from day one I was Alderman, to see people getting involved. And even trying to involve people is difficult today. I don't know why that is. But I like what I, I see tonight. And I hope this is something for in the future, more people will attend meetings and get involved in our community. Because I just don't see it, people don't show up at the meetings. I don't get calls. I, I would love, love it if that was the case. But maybe this is gonna spark something in our city where people get more involved.